I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do audio windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINES. Just call. Thank you.
Good evening. We have decided a while back that it would be a good idea for the advisory committee and the board of directors to get together at various intervals to make sure we're all on the same page. The three items that we would like to discuss tonight are ones that we feel have some consequences for the town of Pembroke, especially when we get to the pension analysis report. But due to what we perceive coming up as far as the buildings in town with some of our public safety equipment, the compact has some implications for that. And also, we really need to get going on our five- or 10-year plan so we're all in the same wavelength as far as what everyone sees as the direction for the town of Pembroke. We're going to be changing our mode of operation a little bit as far as the budget process goes this year. And then Ed will be doing the budget meeting with the various departments. And we'd like to be on that schedule in case, you know, for when those discussions are. And then we probably will invite a few, some of the bigger departments, probably, because to more in-depth discussion of what their plans are for the 2018, 2019 budget. So with that, I'd like to start off with the community compact and what the status of that is.
Mr. Chairman, we, I invited members, various members of the state that drive me to, to be on the committee that I formed regarding the community compact program. And I'm pleased to announce that the first meeting is scheduled for September 4th. And that would allow both the town accountant and the superintendent of schools to be available for that meeting. So that will be on the 7th of 4th.
For that particular meeting, I'm not going to be available. Steve Walsh and John Brown, one or both may make it.
Great.
They have representatives from the advisory committee. Does anyone else have any questions on that, or is that sufficient?
So just for the public's benefit, maybe it's a question for Ed. Just speak to what the community compact is so that the public who may be listening understands what you're talking about.
It's a program that the town would sign on with the state of Massachusetts. And there are grant programs that are available from a public safety standpoint, information technology standpoint, lane use, planning, what have you. I think one of the focuses that the town accountant and I are going to be looking at is an IT grant that I believe the grant deadline's going to be in the middle of January. And that will help fund the program that we want to set up, a software program in joint participation with the schools. And so that would be one of the focuses that we have. But we'll be looking at the other aspects of the community compact program. It offers a wide range of grant opportunities.
This is a program that the state of Massachusetts is heavily involved in. And when the lieutenant governor spoke to us, and I believe we are the only town in the South Shore area that is not a part of the compact. And at the present time, out of the 351 towns, 213--
314.
314 already are a part of it. So we're a little behind the eight ball as far as that goes. But it does mean it opens us up to applying for grants and for a lot of funds that the town would not have to independently spend for some of the things that we have planned coming up. Now, next, we'd like to know what the, if there are any five- and 10-year plans for the town of Pembroke. We used to have a capital planning committee. About four or five years ago, we had a plan. All the department had submitted what they thought they would need in the future. And it was put out on a grid. I haven't seen that for a long time, and I don't know whether it is still being considered at all.
Yeah, we still have the five-year plan, and it's updated on a yearly basis and I think available for advisory. However, it seems like every year, something jumps up to the top, and that becomes more of an emergency. And we tend to deal with, you know, emergencies. But we, I've got a five-year plan now. Another thing that, not only are we talking about a five-year capital plan, but this week, as we all know, there'll be two strategic planning retreats that are going to be held. One Wednesday morning here at Veterans Hall for department heads. And then Saturday morning here at Veterans Hall from 9:00 to 12:00. This is for boards and commissions and interested, you know, public officials and people in general. So we're probably going to have that established, you know, the five-year plan will be established that because it's been five years since we had the last strategic planning retreat. And a lot of the things that came out of that retreat have been implemented. Much the same as the DOR report. We implemented probably half of the 35 items that were recommended by DOR. So I think we're moving forward on that. And the retreat on Saturday will go a long ways into formulating our plan for the next five years or so. 10 years, it's a little, you know, a little far out, you know. But five years, I think, is doable if we can establish, you know, some kind of revenue situation where we can plan ahead as opposed to be reactionary on a yearly basis.
Can I go a little further? So also, you folks might have heard us speak of a capital funding study committee a couple weeks ago. And we have some language of mission that we're going to discuss later on tonight about this. So this capital funding study committee, which we need the advisory committees, someone to be on a seat on that committee.
There will be.
So that committee, when I initially brought it up, was to look at recent buildings, the recent asks for buildings from police, fire, and DBW. But as we've been discussing, it's morphed into a permanent capital funding study committee so that it will be just that, looking into funding for all future uses, calling out from every department, school, DBW, fire. What are you folks looking for in the future, the five- and 10-year plan? I believe that this committee will morph into that study. And it'll be a permanent seated committee with interested people who are going to focus on those projects. And not only just take in asks from departments, but to physically seek out from departments. Spook me, what do you want? I need an answer for me. DBW, all that. So hopefully, this committee is an active committee going forward to answer the question you just asked.
As I think we all realize that we don't have the money to do everything that we want to do. So therefore, we've got to prioritize. And that's where the community compact will come in if there are grants available, which of course would supplement anything that we want to do and at least give us a leg up on working with some of those things.
But the committee you're talking about is something that's sort of necessary after the meetings you have this week and Saturday. It's, you know, to sit there and say, this is what we want, is all fine. But then, how are we going to get there? That's the next, that is a vital step in that planning process, which we're not going to accomplish Wednesday and Saturday. That's something that's going to be ongoing.
Right. And Steve, as we all know, that's something that hasn't always been there.
It's hardly ever been there.
Right. So to be honest. So and as far as the three buildings, for this committee, this proposed committee, as far as the three buildings that are proposed now, I just want the folks out there to know, especially advisory, some people at DBW who hold me aside, and said, is this committee going to have blinders and just try to find funding for the buildings that are in hand proposed? Not necessarily. That's, the police, fire, and DBW have spent money and time looking at their proposed new buildings. So yes, we will look to try to fund those as-is, but we are also accepting, accepting of grand ideas, looking for, someone made a comment the other day, why don't you put the police and fire in the community center? Tear that building down, put them both right there. So these kind of ideas will not be, will be accepted. It will not be thrown out of hand at this committee as I'm chairman of it. So I'll have a little control over that. Just, I want people to know, because I want people to be excited to be part of this committee. And I don't want, I don't want, I don't want people to shun it, saying it's never going, nothing's going to happen. I want people to be a part of it and want to help and contribute. And I know some of you folks do, so I want to bring you folks and other people in. Get something done. That's what we're trying to do.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I'd just like to add on to what Dan said, is that this is a critical committee for this town. For the last several years, we have been asking everyone to just live with the budget you had from the previous year. Finding funds has been the real issue here. We've got plenty of ideas, we just don't have the funds to follow for one. And the time has come to end this. We can only tax people a certain amount of money. And we all know that we could use more commercial in this town. There's a lot of good ideas on how we can get more money. But the point is, we haven't gotten it. And I don't know where we're going to get them. I'm hoping that this committee is going to come up with some excellent ideas. I agree with everything that Dan has said.
There are a lot of people in the community that have good ideas. But what we need is some of those people to come forward. We right now have two vacancies on the advisory committee. And I don't know how many vacancies there are on town committees. And it's, if the people of the town of Pembroke really care for the town, then they need to step up and support some of these committees that exist for whatever their passion is and try to move forward in it with whatever. A lot of things can be done without a lot of capital, but we just need the people to do that. Okay, with that, that brings us up to the pension liability and analysis report, which I'm going to turn over to Tim because he was the architect of all of this. And this is a budget buster, let me put it this way, when you see some of the figures that Tim will present. Tim?
Uplifting introduction. Thanks for letting us talk tonight. Appreciate that. I do love hearing about, talking about this kind of capital funding studies and all the planning we're actually doing for new developments in Pembroke, which I believe is kind of super important. It's something you get excited about. And I've been saying for a while, I think if you use your imagination, the downtown Pembroke area is really beautiful. So it's exciting to see some momentum kicking up there. With that said, I think it's important that, kind of what I'm going to talk about tonight is, there's a lot of talk about planning for things that we might spend money on in the future. It's important not to overlook how, coming up with a plan, to fund promises we've already made. So that's a little bit what I'm going to talk about tonight. We're going to talk about the pensions, the pension liability for Pembroke. And a little bit, I'm going to get into some of the healthcare obligations that the town of Pembroke has accumulated over the years, and some thoughts about how we can begin to approach those. I think, just as we're talking about a lot of the capital, capital planning that we're doing, the more planning we do around how to address this situation, the better it's going to be for Pembroke. I think even if, you know, we don't have to solve the problem immediately, but if we have a plan, we have a discussion about how we're going to get, how we're going to fund this, it will ultimately be credit positive for Pembroke. And that will serve to, will be very beneficial when we go to borrow money for some of these capital projects. So Pembroke's pension obligation represents guaranteed future payments that Pembroke's already made to retirees that have worked in the town. And I want to impress upon everybody, it is the town's responsibility to ensure that these promises are, can be fulfilled. And we want them to be fulfilled without undesirable outcomes for people living in the town right now. And by that, I mean, you know, we don't want to have to raise everybody's taxes or lay people off that work in the town because the pension obligation becomes unserviceable. You know, it's important because I think this is something we've seen particularly in recent years, that we continually face budget pressures. And it's mainly due to increasing healthcare costs and the growing pension obligation. And what we're seeing is, particularly recently, is this begins to start crowding out other things, like some of these capital projects that matter to residents of the town. So I've shared this with the board before, and we shared this at kind of a discussion we had earlier this spring. This is what, an estimate I was working with Mike came up with, what the pension and healthcare cost projections are for the town of Pembroke going out over the next 15 or so years. And you can kind of see that in the 2004 budget, that our pension and healthcare costs were taking up about 10% of our budget. Now we're approaching around 15% to 20%. And it doesn't look pretty from there when we look out to fiscal year 2030, we're kind of approaching over 30%. So you can imagine how that's going to really squeeze some of the things that we want to do if this is what we're forced to pay. Again, these are things that we have already promised, so it's important to keep that in mind.
Tim, that's percentage of the full $60 million budget?
Yes.
It's, as you can see, going into next year, estimating it's going to be close to 20. That's double from 2004. So in just, you know, 15 years, it's doubled its percentage of our budget. So, you know--
You guys correct, if there's anything wrong up here, let me know.
But in terms of being able to maintain the police and fire force and the school funding and everything else, you can see where we're getting squeezed, right there.
And again, I'm going to focus on the pension tonight. The differentiation there will come back, hopefully, and talk to you guys about kind of the health insurance thing. The pension is a known cost. The scarier thing about health insurance is it's kind of an unknown cost. So that could be good or it could be bad. So it's, you know, it's important, again, like I said, we should really come up with a plan for how we're going to deal with this. Taxpayers, town officials, town, school employees, and retirees must be in a meaningful dialogue to address this problem as soon as possible. So hopefully, that's kind of what we're starting tonight. For Pembroke to responsibly plan for the future, we first need to have a firm understanding of our largest liabilities. The pension and the healthcare liabilities are our largest. And our effectiveness and fiscal health will be greatly improved by setting transparent and realistic expectations on what we can expect. So we talk about, we're going to, we're coming up with a plan for all these capital projects. Kind of the first thing you do really when you want to assess anybody's health, it's like, let's lay our cards out on the table, let's see what we owe currently, let's come up with a plan to deal with that. And then we can kind of talk about the future and breathe a sigh of relief once you see what's there. So since the beginning of 2010, despite outsized gains in the stock and bond markets, Pembroke's unfunded pension liability has increased 31%. So it's gone from 19.5 million to 25.5 million. So the unfunded pension liability is the amount of money that Pembroke currently does not have set aside for, that it will owe, is projected to owe in the future. And I just kind of wanted to make a note that the 25.5 million dollar number is an actuarial liability, which is a little bit smooth and makes it look a little bit better. But that the real number is closer to $29 million that Pembroke currently has not funded for their pension obligations.
So, Tim, quick question. So that's the pension unfunded liability. Are there healthcare unfunded liabilities?
Yeah, the healthcare ones are a lot bigger. I think we've just, we've just done evaluation. I don't know what the number came in as, but--
Yeah, it's one and a half times up.
Yeah. So about 40 million.
I believe that the figure we're pinning this year for retirees' healthcare is in the vicinity of $2 million. That's out of our current budget for retirees right now. And it's grown.
I knew you'd want to answer.
And it's grown. Well, it's important for everybody to know, you know, not only here at this table, but the folks at home. Because as I was, that number is, there's more to it than that.
So over the next 10 years, Pembroke will be expected to pay 64% more towards its pension obligation than it did in the prior 10 years. So from fiscal year 2007 to 2016, Pembroke paid about $21.5 million towards its pension obligation. And based on projections from the Plymouth County Retirement Association, we'd be expected to pay $35.4 million for the next 10 years. So it's a lot more money. So it's really something we have to think about. So it's important, I just want to talk a little bit about how you come up with an unfunded liability. And the most important assumption that a kind of retirement board makes is what their discount rate is going to be. So the discount rate is basically saying, hey, if you owe $100 30 years down the road, you don't have to put $100 aside right now. But you have to assume that you're going to get a certain return on your money. And based on that return, you back into a number that you would have to have set aside now. So 30 years from now, you owe $100, say you're going to get 8%, assume you're going to get an 8% return on that money, maybe, maybe today you only have to put aside $20. And that gap is what we talk about when we're talking about the unfunded liability. So the more, the higher the number you think you're going to get off your investments, the lower amount of money you have to put aside today. So if you think you're going to get 10% returns for 30 years, you have to put less money aside today than you would if you thought you were only going to get 4% retire, 4% returns. So I want to talk about this because I think this is really important where, so very small changes in that discount rate can result in massive differences in how liabilities are recorded. So the number that I shared with you earlier of a 28.6 million dollar unfunded liability, that's based on an 8% discount rate. So the assumption that the money we've set aside will earn 8% a year. If we were instead to assume we were only going to return 7% a year, that number would balloon to $35.28 million. So it's a 25% difference just by a 1% reduction in that discount rate. And this is what I, where I really meant when I said, we should really think about setting realistic expectations. Do we really think we're going to get 8%? Do we think we're going to get 7%? Do we think we're going to get 10%? It's very, you can kind of see, based on just the small changes here, it's a really important discussion to have. So currently, the Plymouth County Retirement Association manages money that Pembroke puts aside to pay towards these obligations. And I would argue that for years, Plymouth County Retirement Association has maintained an unrealistically high discount rate. And it's actually one of the highest in the state. In 2015, the Plymouth County Retirement Association ignored a recommendation from the state's governing body when it asked to revise its discount rate lower so that it more accurately reflected expectations. PEREC is the governing body that sent that letter to the Plymouth County Retirement Association. And you can see here, they asked them to lower it by almost 50 basis points, so a half a percent lower to more accurately reflect.
One question?
Sure.
Can you explain your thinking on recommending reducing the assumption further from 2017?
That's not my recommendation. That's, that's a letter that the state sent to Plymouth County Retirement Association. So the governing body of the state that oversees all the publicly managed pension funds, PEREC, they sent a letter to Plymouth County last year, and they suggested that they lower that rate for this year.
They were cooking the books and got called out on it.
Well, in another slide or two--
I said it, you go ahead.
No, in another slide or two, you'll see some of the effect that there, that this has in how it's creeping up on us.
So if you wanted to actually look at what the number said, so for the past two decades, the Plymouth County Retirement Association has consistently come up short of its own projections. So the chart you're seeing here is, the black line would show you what Plymouth County Retirement Association's assumed returns would be. And the red and green dots would be the 10-year rolling returns of where they came in. So by rolling returns, I mean, when you're seeing in the table on the right, you see 2006, what the actual versus the assumption is. Those returns are from the period 1997 to 2006. So 2007 would be 98 to 2007. So you can kind of see what the actual returns were versus what their assumption would have been. And you can kind of see, so for no timeframe in the past two decades, has Plymouth County Retirement Association met what their own assumptions would be. And it's actually been, you know, significantly lower. So the average 10-year return over this two-decade period is a little under 5.5% where they've, their assumption has been 8.5%.
Question?
Sure.
With that example that you're showing with the consistency of overestimating, is there any oversight on with Plymouth County Retirement Plan? With a record like that, wouldn't somebody be asking the question that you're asking?
I'm here asking it. You would think that. I've asked it. But I don't want to get too much into Plymouth County Retirement Association because tonight's more about Pembroke, so I'll kind of get, I just, I did want to show this so we kind of understand how it's, how it's impacting our planning. And then we'll kind of make some suggestions on some steps that Pembroke itself could take. So this is, this is one of the impacts. So this is the change over time in the Plymouth County Retirements Association 2018 employer contribution estimates. So every year, Plymouth County Retirement Association, they will give an estimate for what they would expect employer costs to be for 2018. So I basically just took, hey, in 2010, they had an estimate for what 2018 was going to be. In 2011, they had another estimate for 2018 was going to be. So here, I'm just kind of illustrating how that estimate has crept up over the past seven years. So in the past seven years, that estimate for 2018 for employer pension costs has increased by 37%. So that's where, that's where it really puts pressure on us if we're relying on these estimates when we see, well, we owe more for the pension this year than we thought we were going to. We owe more than we thought we were going to. This is why. And this happens because they continually set unrealistic expectations for their own returns.
And again, it's the same thing that, you know, on an individual basis, you may have heard in terms of, the earlier you put money away, the better you are later in life. They are delaying putting the money away by that high 8% rate. So every year that goes by, they're increasing how much we owe. But they're doing it, you know, if they had done this before, they would have had us put up more money. But since it would have been earlier, it would have been a lot less money to us going forward. It's, it's, you know, if you put $100 a week away when you're 25 years old, and you do that your whole life, you're going to have more money than if you waited until you were 60 and started putting $1,000 a week away, you know? It's just the compound interest and everything else that goes with it. And what they're doing is they're going to force us to put the $1,000 a week away. And at some point, they're going to have to drop that rate at the same time that all of these other things have caught up with them. So we're going to get slaughtered all at once rather than if they try and, if they drop that rate a quarter a point now, and a couple of years a quarter a point, a couple of years a quarter a point, they can ease it in.
I'll say, in Plymouth County's defense, they do, so the state law would require the fund to be fully funded by 2040, I think. So Plymouth County is setting a target for itself of 2030. Now, it seems highly unlikely they come up to that, but there is some flexibility that they have built in that they can push that date back. But that just becomes, if we're relying on that, that's where it really is a challenge to planning. Because if they're going to move the date back, then it's longer that we're going to owe for it. So that's, that's really what we want to watch out for. We're just looking for ways to kind of transparently understand what we owe, set realistic expectations. It would help us plan better. So when we rely on their unrealistic expectations, it kind of results in, well, hey, where are these pension costs coming from? When we see that chart and when we see kind of our budget getting squeezed by this, that's kind of what we're talking about. It's, the use of an unrealistic discount rate masks the true cost of the pension benefits and encourages underfunding, undercontributing, and excessive risk-taking, which threatens the ability of plans to pay basic retiree benefits. So to plan effectively, I think we need, as a town, a clear picture of the present and informed expectations of the future. And hopefully, we're getting a little bit of that tonight. So this is, this is important, that the Plymouth County Retirement Association is unaccountable to Pembroke taxpayers and its elected officials. So they represent retirees of the system, which, you know, if I was a retiree in the system, I'm not, but I would, I would be wanting-- system, I'm not, but I would, I would be wanting to ask these questions. But again, tonight's more about Pembroke, and Pembroke taxpayers and Pembroke officials have to be thinking as a separate body than Plymouth County Retirement Association. So we, you know, they're unaccountable to us as a town. So we have to, you know, we have to be careful on what we're relying on them for. And we don't have to rely on them for a lot, really. So GASB 68 is a regulation that was, that went into effect about two years ago. And what it is, it's requiring employers to record pension amounts in their financial statements. And because the town is solely responsible for its financial statements, town management is responsible for the actuarial methods and assumptions used in measuring the pension amounts. So that discount rate that Plymouth County is using, I think, I would be hesitant for Pembroke to just take that rate and accept it without documentation of how they got to that rate. Because, again, they're not accountable to us. The town is solely responsible for whatever method we're using to value our pension. So I would, I would suggest that the town comes up with a methodology or a policy for complying with GASB 68.
I have a quick question, and possibly Mike can answer this, is that whether our CPA firm has ever asked for this documentation? Because when they put out a report, they're stating, you know, certain things. And I would think that they would be asking questions about where we're getting that number from, and whether it's a reasonable rate, and how it came about. Have they ever asked that?
Yeah, actually, I asked them, I asked them that today. And that previous slide, they said that's not true. GASB said that town management is responsible for the actuary methods and assumptions. However, because we have no control.